All right, I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. So we're having a public hearing to discuss using money from the Facilities Expendable Trust Fund in relation to the Public School Infrastructure Grant, as we discussed at the last board meeting. We had the detailed information which everybody should have in front of them. I think Debbie just passed out new copies. That shows the breakdown of all the different items that we had applied for and have been approved under this grant. And then it shows the 80 percent amount that will be paid through the grant and the 20 percent that we need to fund as a district, which comes to this number of $56,968. So I think the feeling was that we should look to, you know, remove $60,000 from the Facilities Trust Fund to cover that, give a little leeway, you know, up to $60,000.
I agree. We're not gonna get a quarter million dollars every year. So we should come up with the 20 and do it.
And this is all security stuff, basically? It is, and that's why when you see that the state status has approved, I think a lot of schools said, hey, we want this, we want that. The generator, I think a lot of schools asked for, which they would not, they said, no, that's not a security thing. Let's try. So yeah, these are the items that we requested and have been approved. And you can see the outline of when we're looking to complete different aspects of those, one of which has been done, the intercom system. So we're looking at a real number there of what our contribution is at 4,000, like 4,008, 11. So I would accept a motion to...
Can I ask a quick question?
Well, you can, absolutely.
Just an understanding type question?
Yeah.
Because we're voting to get this money out of trust fund, but yet some of the project's not gonna happen until next year, does, is that fine to do now, or do we have to like redo it again next year?
We could probably encumber it, right? If we don't...
Yes, I mean, you can vote to spend up to that amount for this whole project now. Obviously, we won't use it until we do each project.
Okay, no...
But we have to file reports with the state, too, that shows us how much we actually spent, send them all the invoices and all that.
So it doesn't have to be this, in this term?
No, no.
So say we did...
Like, encumbering the money.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
No, it's fine. No, and I just wanna say, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't trying to breeze past questions. I was gonna get a motion and second on the floor and then open it up to discussion, further discussion.
No worries.
So I would accept a motion to spend up to $60,000 from the Facilities Expendable Trust Fund in relation to the 20 percent match for the Public School Infrastructure Grant as presented to us.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brian. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thanks, Vance. Any further discussion or questions from the board?
You did say 60?
$60,000.
$60,000, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone in the public? Mr. Hood, no questions? Okay. Hearing none, I will... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? So that passes. So at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Here.
Thank you, Vance. In a second.
Jay.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So now we move on to our regular business, the public session. We'll start with the minutes real quick. The approval of the regular minutes, which were in your packet, you should have read through those, if there were any errors or changes that needed to be made that you noticed. If none, I will accept a motion for the approval of the regular minutes of April 18th, 2018.
Motion.
Thank you, Vance.
Second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any further questions as you breeze through it?
Just briefly what we had just discussed, does that have to go into these minutes? No?
No. No, no.
Oh, okay. Even though we came back and voted in both?
Those will be the minutes of the... I'm sorry, what was your question?
We had that, the minutes that are mistaken in here.
Well, those are the non-public and the return to public, so I'm gonna get to that next. Right now, we're just talking about the original public session.
Okay, the original, prior to that.
Yeah.
Roger.
Yeah. All in favor of approval of the regular minutes of April 18th, 2018?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Vance, thank you. The next two items are the approval of the non-public minutes and the approval of the return to public minutes. And it looks like we're missing the return to public. Things were a little convoluted here, so I think we're gonna redo these minutes and we'll go over them at the next meeting for approval.
Yeah, it was my mistake.
I wasn't gonna throw you under the bus, Sharon, but...
Clearfearful error.
All right. So moving on to our educational focus point with the going over our audit and...
We have Cheryl Pratt here from Fodzik and Sanderson, who is our auditors. They come in every year for our annual audit. And I did pass out three audits books where you guys can share as she goes through the audit.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
I'm the director in charge of your audit, and I've been doing audits since 1991. And this is all I do. I do audits of towns and schools all over the state of New Hampshire. My first does approximately 139 of such audits on an annual basis. So needless to say, I love what I do. So I'm gonna take you through the report. If you have questions, please ask me as we go. And if there's something that I missed and you wanna discuss, please let me know and we'll discuss that as well. Okay? If you wouldn't mind turning to page one of the report. Page one is actually your opinion letter. This is, this letter is what we, all the work that we do as part of the audit determines what type of an opinion you're gonna receive on your financial statements. Because we're doing, the audit is to make sure that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So when we come to start the audit, we send Deb a, probably like a 30-page document that she needs to compile information, not only for the general fund, but for your food service funds, your grants funds, your student activity funds, and the trust funds. We actually look at the trust funds as well. So we provide you that, and you probably recall having to fill out a questionnaire on an annual basis. And based on those questionnaires, that can lead us down some paths to look at information more carefully or in a different light, because in different, in audits throughout the years, I've actually had concerns brought to board members or even staff members' attention that we will then do additional testing in certain areas. And I recently was on an audit that we had that happen. There were some concerns about the state reporting. So we actually looked into the state reporting, and we did find, we did find some issues and they had to be addressed, and they were brought up in as part of the audit report as a finding. So the audit, it does take, not only does it take Deb, it probably takes her over a month to make sure all that information is gathered. We do ask for a lot of information, and then we analyze, we examine a lot of detail in various accounts. We actually look at, you know, your food service revenues, we document internal controls and update them annually to make sure the processes in place are working so that there's no potential areas where you may fall down and things aren't getting recorded properly 'cause there's a weakness in the internal controls. So as part of the report, if you did have some major issues, then we would have what we call a management letter in the back of the report that would identify those areas that were either material or significant to the financial statements. And I can happily report that you did not have any such findings in your report, which is very good. Then, once all that information is gathered, we send a team up here for two, three days of three, usually two to four people, and we then go through all this information and ask a lot of questions in the meantime while we're here. So that then, based on that and all the testing that we do, we are able then to compile all the financial statements and give you this report. And based on that, we will issue this, what we call the opinion letter, which is on pages one and two. And your opinion, I'm happy to say, is considered unmodified opinion. Many years ago, they used to be called qualified, unqualified, adverse, and a disclaimer of an opinion. So you got what they considered, what is considered the best type of an opinion, an unmodified opinion, which is what we call a clean opinion. So what that is saying is that your financial statements in all materials respects are fairly stated. And then your financial statements are broken down into different pieces. And if you go back a page, you'll see on the index how they're broken down. We have the government-wide financial statements, which take all of your funds and kind of bring them all together as one reporting unit. So it takes your general fund, your grants fund, your food service fund, brings them all, and your expendable trust funds, brings it all together into one financial balance sheet and what you would call an income statement. Then, the next set of financial statements are your fund financial statements, which are your individual government, you know, your general fund, your food service fund, and your grants fund. When I tend to talk about the financial statements, I kinda focus more on the governmental funds because that's where you're more interested in, especially when you're trying to determine what did we, or what do we have for unassigned fund balance to return to reduce the tax rate. Those financial statements are then followed by the notes to the financial statements, required supplementary information, and that comes into play with things, I don't know if you're familiar with OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability, and the net pension liability. Those two liabilities have always been there, but they had never been reported until recently, when the GASPY Board said, these will now be reported. So the financial statements have to, these government-wide financial statements are reporting some large liabilities because of those two liabilities that are now having to be reported. So those schedules are, on those two matters are the required supplementary information. And then we have some individual fund schedules, which are your, your general fund broken down in more detail. So, because, so on page one and two is your opinion letter. It was unqua, it was an unmodified, so that's the best opinion you can get.
Can we, should we give props to Deb for that? Is that a nice start, Deb? You're awesome.
And I must say, Deb does a very good job. I can't tell you how many places that sometimes I have to push the auditors out the door to go and do an audit because they don't have information, or it's not ready, it's half-prepared, and we have to go back. You know, we'll go get to as far as we can, and then we have to pull out, and then we go back and do a little more and pull out. But Deb gets it all together, and we're able to come in, get our work done, and get out. So it's very, we, everybody likes coming here. You're re, everything is ready to go. I have one, one audit that, again, I have to push them out the door because nothing's ever ready. Now, on page 40 of the report, this is, and this is kinda how I go through the report, this is your general fund budget versus actual for your revenues for the year. So it shows the budget column, the actual, and then the difference between the two. In the third column is your, your difference, and you actually took in $11,342 more than what you estimated. So that's good. I've gone into districts where they underestimated the revenues, and then they're in the hole. I actually had to go into a district one year where I had to tell the brand-new superintendent as I was completing the fieldwork that you have an issue with your budget, you didn't properly budget for something, and you ended the prior year with a $300,000 deficit, and you better check, recheck your bu, this was like in October, you better check your budget for this year because of the mistakes that were made. And they had to freeze their budget in October for the entire year. So, so that's good. But you, you know, you took in more than, than you estimated. On page 41, this is, these are your expenditures, your, your budget versus actual and your expenditures. And this report also reflects your encumbrances, what you're bringing forward from the prior year into the current year for items that you had intended to, you had budgeted for, but didn't necessarily get the chance to do in that year. And likewise, you're also, we also reflect the encumbrances going into the current fiscal year you're in for the same type of reason. You budgeted maybe, a lot of times people will intend to do some outdoor work. They budgeted for, you know, upgrading fields, but because they had monsoons in June, you know, a lot of rain in May and June, they couldn't get that work done. So they bring the budget forward to do that work in July or August. Or because of timing with school, a lot of times encumbrances will be carried forward. So once we take the prior year encumbrances, add them to the current year budget, and then subtract the expenditures for the current year minus the encumbrances going forward into 1718, you actually ended up with, you underspent your budget by $222,501. And if you turn to page 42, that's all summarized, and a nice, and a lot of times I find this is probably the most important schedule that everybody wants to know about, is where did we end up the year? So the fund balance at the beginning of the year, you had unassigned fund balance of Of that, you used $314,908 of that beginning unassigned fund balance to reduce the taxes for 1617. You also, and this is where those two schedules that we just went over, the budget surplus, the revenue surplus, and the unexpended balance of the appropriations resulted in a budget, overall budget surplus of $233,843. So that gets added back to that beginning unassigned fund balance number. There was a decrease in committed fund balance because of warrant articles from one year to the next, usually with the expendable trust funds, money being voted out of unassigned fund balance to go into the trust funds, of $71,655, that resulted in an unassigned fund balance of $369,287. Now that number, I want to have you turn back to page 11. In the first column for general fund, at, down at the bottom, you will see that $369,287 is part of your fund balance. Your total fund balance was $877,116,000. And that was broken down into three components. And, and I apologize for off-page flipping. I have yet to figure out how to do this without flipping a lot of pages. On page 33, there's a breakdown, and the, between all these financial schedules and those financial schedules in the back, starting on page 20 to page 34, these are the notes to the financial statements. So if you see some large numbers on any, in these financial statements, you may say, well, what makes up these numbers, or why? These notes to the financial statements will further detail why those numbers are or what those numbers are. So those are, these are key notes to understand the numbers. But I like the note 15, which is the governmental fund balance note, and that shows you specifically what makes up the different pieces of the fund balance. So that first column, you'll see the general fund balance. So in, under committed, the $475,446 is actually made up of the expendable trust fund balance and the voted appropriation that was noted in the March 17 minutes for the 1718 year. That was noting a warrant article to bring money forward. So we, we set, we record that as kind of a committed fund balance as, as part of your total. We take it out of the unassigned and we show it as committed, 'cause you're gonna commit it for this year.
Yep.
And then, and two, with these different designations of fund balance, prior to GASPY 54, it was kind of the Wild West of fund balance. Some people would show encumbrances as reserved for special purposes or reserved for contingency. GASPY 54 came on to, came into play about eight years ago, and they said, no. Fund balance will be either non-spendable, restricted, committed, aside, or unassigned. So now that everybody is categorizing, you know, their encumbrances, their contingency amounts in the same manner. So we, they've really tightened the control of how things are reported. The, the assigned fund balance on page 34 is your encumbrances of $32,383. And there's a note disclosure in the notes to give you the breakdown on that number, as well as, again, on schedule two, the next-to-last column also gives you a breakdown by function of those encumbrances. And then the unassigned fund balance, again, is reported at the $369,287. So that's kind of a quick overview of your report. Now, do you have any questions on, and I could go into a lot more detail. Do you have any questions on this piece?
Just, the unassigned fund balance, does that mean that's money that's, that has not been spent, that is not intended to be spent on something specific? It's just like leftover money?
Right, that would have to be used to reduce the taxes for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so that's the stuff that, that we're looking at sending back to the towns, or whatever that process that is?
Yeah, and during the budget session, we had also talked about, 'cause we have the, they had voted in that new...
The two and a half percent.
Yeah, the two and a half percent we can retain.
Right, so it would, you know, could come out of that.
Yeah.
So that would come out of that?
Yeah.
So, well, that ended up being like $150,000, yeah? And so then, whatever that, whatever's left over, the 220 or something is, would be sent?
Yeah.
'Cause that's the number that, okay. So that doesn't represent...
Through the tax rate setting process, it's not a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Wow. That was controversial subject. But, so that's the, that includes having already taken the money out to replenish the, the trust funds?
Yeah. That might be out of that, too, also, 'cause that's a special, at the end of each year, and I can't, I don't have the report in front of me, but I think, and they usually vote up to $100,000 to take out of the trust funds, to put into the trust fund.
Okay. And like, in this report, we've shown a committed fund balance for voted appropriations. So in the report, we show that as a separate number, that $100,000.
So that's, so the $369...
Minus the two and a half percent.
Minus, minus approximately 150, minus another 100?
And in here, if you go back to the note 15 on page, page 33...
Yeah.
You'll see the voted appropriations of $100,000 under committed.
Okay.
So that's kind of been set aside. And then go to the next page.
Yeah.
And then you'll see the unassigned. So the hundreds already been taken out of that, out of the unassigned.
So the only thing that's coming out of that $369 is the two and a half percent?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then with that, what would happen for the, the upcoming, if you do vote the two and a half percent, if that's set aside, that would show, how we show it is, back to page 34, we would break the unassigned down into two pieces, the straight unassigned that would go back to now to reduce the tax rate, and then we show another piece, unassigned retained for that two and a half percent.
And is, is the unassigned retained two and a half percent reflected in this report from last year?
No, I don't, yeah, 'cause we, it was two, because that would've been two years ago, and we didn't do that.
Right.
We didn't have enough.
Oh, okay. So next report will...
So once you do that, it would then be reflected.
Gotcha.
And that, and two, I just, 'cause I had a district that actually took that two and a half percent and put it in, it was a new client. They actually took the two and a half percent and put it in the trust fund. And you can't do that. That stays on the books, and again, it is broken down, you would make a journal entry to show unassigned retained, to keep track of it.
And it goes back in the next year if you haven't used it?
If you haven't used it, right. And then you vote again. But I did have a district that set it, put it over into the trust fund, I'm like, you can't do that. They didn't even, they just created a trust fund on their own without authorization, and they had to, we had to get it, get them to pull it back. So it just stays on the books.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions on this piece?
Yeah, I, going back to that page. So the district voted back in 2012 or 13, whenever that, that balance law came into effect, the district voted at the annual meeting to allow the school district to do that, you know, to factor that in each year. So they, once they vote that, it's just during, when we, when we do our revenues and all that in the fall, we let the Department of Revenue know.
Right. And I believe you then have to take a, like a, at a board meeting, say, we, we as a board want to retain, you know, X amount of dollars for the, the two and a half percent.
And I think they just made a form for that, 'cause, yeah.
Yeah, on the, one of the tax rate forms, they do show the, the amount you can retain up to, which is two and a half percent of the net assessment.
Are you saying that we need to vote as a board to do that annually?
Yes. You should have a, I would clearly double-check it with DRA, DRA rep, but I believe you have to have a board vote to say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna do this for this year.
And every fall, I go through the financial reports with the board when we're going through all that, and say, this is the amount that's going to the trust fund, this is the retained amount. But we, I think we have to have a formal vote, which that part we weren't doing.
Yeah, so I would do that, like in June, and you could say, you know, up to a certain dollar amount. But I would, is, who is your DRA rep?
Jamie.
Oh, yeah. Just double-check with Jamie. She's very good. But I believe the board does have to have an action. That's one thing we also do read, is your board minutes. 'Cause a lot of times, there are things that are done throughout the year that you may, like as, we give a questionnaire that Deb has to complete, you may forget about something 'cause so much goes on. So we read your minutes, and then we follow up to make sure, you know, if you voted in a grant, an EMPG grant, or you entered into a lease agreement, or, we follow up to make sure we've, we've captured everything in your financial statements. And that's one thing we look for. Okay? Now, last piece is the governance letter. Because you didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, the governance letter is basically a summation of the audit. You know what types of estimates were recorded, when you got the, when you basically got the representation letter to sign and the report were now final, if there were any material adjustments that were made, we attach those. And we typically like to attend, attach to the general fund adjustments that we make that are reviewed with Deb, and then she gets copies of ours so she can adjust her financial statements on the computer system so that both our financials and your financials match. Because if you come back the next year and they don't, that could cause some confusion. We don't have that here, but in some places I do, people forget to make those journal entries. And then the last piece that we show in this letter are items that we, we think that, you know, they're, they're not issue, they're not significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, but they're things that you maybe wanna look at. And one of them, I noticed when I got here, you were working on, which I was like, oh, that's very good, is just some items, kind of housekeeping issues. And one of them, I'm just gonna jump a little bit to page, the third page, is we just recommended that the board just review, periodically review your, your financial policies to make sure that they're up to date, they're current. I took over an audit client last year, when I looked at their policies, they had a purchasing policy from 1976, and it hadn't been updated since then.
Nope.
And it was talking about, you know, computer cards, that they were, like, they would put the card into the computer and it would push a button and it would record information on it, and it was so outdated. So we always tell boards, and that's one thing we're kind of stickler for, is that you, you know, maybe have, every three to five years, just review a group of finance policies to make sure that they're up to date and they're still working proper. to make sure that they're up to date and they're still working properly. I had a, another board say, well, geez, we, we have purchase orders, and that, and actually, purchase orders was another one that we had commented on. But they'll say, well, we have, we have to have a purchase order for everything. But we don't really like to get them for, like, legal and electric and, um, like, paying the water in the sewer on a quarterly basis. And I said, well, that's easy. Because they would get written up on it, because when you read their policy, they have to have a purchase order for everything. So I said, well, you need to go back and re-review your policy and take, you know, note that purchase orders will be obtained for everything except for, you know, those types of normal monthly, you know, utilities or expenses that are incurred. Uh, so, because again, things change, uh, people change, so you, that's a good, um, practice to get into, is to review those policies. Uh, another thing you would want to look at too, I've kind of been pushing is, um, and it's thought in, in this one in particular, about crowdfunding. Is anyone aware of crowdfunding? What that is, is your GoFundMe pages, or, um, there's another one, there's a donor, there's a dona, donor, oh, I'm trying to think. It's a donor account, it's a fundraiser. It's a, it's a computer, a website, don, uh, fundraising program. So if you were to Google, you know, GoFundMe and put, you know, Lincoln Woodstock School District, I don't know if you will, but it's possible, you could find that maybe one of the activities or one of the clubs at the high school might have started a GoFundMe page to raise money for, I had one that they were raising money for a weight room, uh, equipment in the weight room. Or they were trying to raise money to send kids, uh, to a field trip, uh, down to the aquarium in Boston. And when I brought that to the attention of the administration, they're like, what? And I said, you've got a GoFundMe page out there. And there's a lot of issues with GoFundMes, because, you know, it could be something that you, the board, maybe has a policy against doing that. Uh, in one of my large districts, they were actually trying to raise money through a GoFundMe page to raise money for teachers that were, that were cut from the budget. Well, they, they're trying to raise money for something they can't do. So it, it doesn't hurt to kind of Google those GoFundMes, um, you might be surprised what's out there. So it's something that you would want to have a policy on, that, you know, they, maybe these types of things need to be brought before the board or the superintendent, before they're done, before they're approved. The other thing with them is they'll put pictures on them. You may have a policy about putting children's pictures on the website, but they don't, they don't know that. So it's just something I caution you on. That's a big, that's like a new one, that's new terr, this, this whole crowdfunding is very new territory.
Is that, is that money taxable because it's using the name of the school? Like, would we have to owe taxes if they raised a hundred thousand and donated?
No, it'd be considered donated money.
It'd be just considered a gift?
Yes. Uh, you may, but again, you may have to write a thank you, you know, if it's a substantial donation. Luckily, you probably don't have any big ones, but I do Manchester School District, and when I Googled, I had over forty of these types of things, and the, the board and the superintendent had no clue they were out there. And I said, well, you better look. Um, and actually, I'm speaking, I talked to Deb about this. I'm speaking tomorrow, uh, in front of a administrator's group, and I'm speaking at Tri-State ASBO in a couple of weeks on student activity funds. And I will make sure you have a copy, but I put together a manual on student activity funds, and I put a section on this crowdfunding. And I actually have a sample policy in that book, um, that I will share with you. So it's just something to, do you have to worry about it tomorrow? Probably not, but I would put it on your radar. Because you just don't want to be, you know, caught with something that's like, ugh, now we're going to deal with this. Just nip it in the bud before it happens. So again, uh, purchase orders, I'll just go back, actually, let's go back. So back to page two. We just had a, a comment on the capital asset listing. You want to make sure your capital assets are being tracked in-house. It, it can be done as simply as with a, an Excel spreadsheet. And just making sure you're capturing, capturing all your capital assets, and likewise disposals. As they happen, you want to have, um, you're, you're tracking those disposals and you're picking up those additions. As part of the audit, we do test, uh, to make sure you've got them all. But, you know, an audit isn't a hundred percent guarantee, because if it was, we'd be looking at all of your transactions and we don't do that. Because it would cost way too much money for us to look at every single transaction. So you just want to have a simple Excel spreadsheet and, and keep track of them on that. And that's something we could, uh, help you with, you know, to give you an Excel spreadsheet.
What's considered a capital asset?
A capital asset is something, you have a five, and it's explained in the, the notes.
Okay.
Um, it's something that extends the life or improves efficiency, uh, to another item or the building. So, for example, the building is a capital asset.
Sure.
The parking lots, like, infrastructure, uh, that's a capital asset. Like, if you own a bus or a truck or a vehicle, that's a capital asset. Anything over five thousand dollars.
Okay, that was, I was wondering, we're not talking desks and chairs, we're talking about?
Big stuff.
Big, big.
Um, yeah, like computers, we always say, we frown against report, you know, capitalizing computers because they are turning over every, you know, three to five years, uh, and those are hard ones to track on the financials. And they, they don't add, when you add them all up, they may not be material to the financials if you didn't record them. But they, you know, the big stuff, the buildings, the land, um, you know, the fields, the parking lot, that type of thing. Buses, vehicles.
But then, the new TV equipment would be tracked.
Yeah, that probably would be, um, you know, when we do the, um, the, the roof improvements, projects like that.
Yeah, so, you know, really, the big stuff. Gatsby thirty-four states that you have to capture of the, the entity's assets, eighty percent of your capital assets. We actually just had a speaker come into our firm last Thursday, and he did a, a whole day presentation on capital assets, which was fascinating. So I'm actually going to speak to the Tri-State ASBO, that board, when I go up to speak at the conference and say, you should get this guy in, he comes from, uh, Chicago. Get him in next year to speak at ASBO on capital assets. Because he was, he was very good, I was just like, wow. It was very interesting. And typically, a whole day of capital assets? I mean, I'm bad enough listening to me, but this was eight hours, but he was very good, so. Cash receipts, you just want to make sure when you're taking in money that, um, deposit, as checks are coming in, they're, they're stamped immediately for deposit only. You know, it, it's amazing what people will try to do. They may try to take a check off a desk, and it's amazing how many people have, we've seen over the years, would take one and try to deposit it, and then it's not theirs and they actually get away with it. Or they will grab it, maybe doctor it up, and they are able to cash it. So we're just saying, you want to make sure deposits are done timely and that they are restrictively endorsed, um, as soon as you get the checks in. And that would be not only for, you know, the business office, food service, um, department, and even the student activity funds. Purchase orders, we haven't discussed. You just want to make sure, this is common wherever we go. A lot of times, you have a policy, but people will kind of forget about the policy. What we found here was a lot of times, purchase orders were being completed after the, the whole purchase was initiated. So the purchase order may be, the invoice is dated May first, but the purchase order was dated May fifth. So that kind of, it, it kind of negates the whole reason for having a purchasing policy. Because your system should be able to track purchase, purchase orders in the computer system. So when Deb is looking at the financial report, she can say, oh, yeah, we only really have this balance left in the instruction line or the supply line, because we have this encumbrance in place. So it's very important that people follow the policy and that they're getting those purchase orders prior to initiating that, that purchase. Student activity funds, uh, what we found there is that there were several instances where the check request form was incomplete, and in some cases, there was no supporting documentation for the dispersment. And that's, that's a, usually, if we see something hit in the papers, a lot of times, it's a student activity fund. So we're kind of sticklers on the student activity funds, making sure that there is documentation for every purchase. I've seen, um, documentation, I mean, at least they had it, but it wasn't great. I've seen it on a Post-It note this big before, or on a Dunkin' Donuts napkin. You know, bought a dozen of donuts at Dunkin' Donuts, here's the napkin as my receipt. Well, that's not good enough. Um, so in this manual I've put together for student activity funds, which I, if no one goes, I'll make sure you have a copy. We give people the, uh, here's a sample blank invoice that you can tailor to your needs and use if you can't get an invoice. And, and, uh, a quick example would be, like, if you had a DJ come in, and maybe it's a high school kid. Well, the high school kid's not going to have his own, like, invoicing system. So it's a blank form you could use and say, here, fill this out as the DJ, and turn it in, and then that's the documentation that you have for that dispersment. So that's important, that you have that supporting documentation. With the treasurer, uh, we highly recommend, and we've seen cases where the treasurer has fallen ill and can't perform their duties. So we highly recommend that you, uh, have a deputy, um, to back up the treasurer. So if the treasurer gets ill and can't perform their duties, maybe even wants to take a vacation, you can still function as an organization by having a deputy in place. What we don't recommend is that you have a treasurer, you do have a treasurer's stamp, and you can, others use it other than the treasurer. That's not good practice, because I'm not saying that anybody has done anything wrong, but it could fall into the wrong hands, a check could get stamped, and then they've tried to cash a ten-thousand-dollar check. So it's just very important that when the treasurer's not available, that you have a deputy, you appoint one, that can fulfill those duties. Okay? And then the policies. The biggest, and then down below, we have, uh, new Gatsby pronouncements coming up. The biggest one, uh, that I see impacting you is on page four, which is Gatsby Statement Eighty-four, which is what I'm going to be speaking on. What they're saying now is, instead of reporting your student activity funds as agency funds, we're now going to be reporting them as a special revenue fund, similar to the food service and the grants fund. So they're going to be, presently, they're on a separate schedule in the financial reports on, uh, Schedule E-one. It shows an agency fund, that's where they are. Well, now they're going to be blended with the governmental funds and have their own standalone column. Their fund bal, their funds cannot be used for any other purposes than for student purposes. But the board, Gatsby Board, in their infinite wisdom, felt because the principal, the administrator in the principal's office have total, or administrative control over those funds, that they should be part of, be reported as part of the governmental funds. So we're going to be moving them and showing them, just like the food service and the grants fund. That will happen in two thousand nineteen, twenty. Uh, but the fund balance will be restricted, because it is, it's still going to be student money, and it can only be spent for student purposes.
And it will still run out of the principal's office.
And it will still run out of the principal's office. They're just going to have to give Deb, uh, reporting, she'll have to determine how she wants to do that. But either maybe quarterly, or semi-annually, or once a year, get a report, uh, so that she can make journal entries to record the activity for the year, uh, on the financial statements, that will then be audited and incorporated as a governmental fund. So that's, that's the biggest, um, pronouncement thing, thank goodness. Because some of the pronouncements, like when the OPEB and the net pension liability hit, it makes your head spin. So this one's an easy one, but it's the biggest one that's coming up. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
I think the board does not, Debbie, did you have anything, or?
Well, it's kind of a lifetime of those.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's good for you guys to understand.
Yeah.
You know, what goes into this, and all the different reports.
No, absolutely, you know, Cheryl.
Well, I don't understand it, Tommy.
Yeah, thank you for coming up, I, you know, we get this audit every year, and it's a nice thick book, and we look through it and go, okay, there's a lot of numbers in here and such, and, you know, at the end of it, we go, okay, we're pretty sure Debbie's doing a great job, so we know everything's where it's supposed to be. And we get the summary, and we know, you know, that, that's pretty easy to read through and know where we stand. But it, it definitely, I think it helps to, to have someone like yourself come and give us a little more in-depth every now and again, so we understand the process better.
Good.
And I think, um, you just reminded us that we can never let Debbie retire. We keep her on a long retainer.
Or take a vacation.
Or get sick.
But we appreciate you coming up tonight.
Great, well, thank you for having me.
Very informative, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is correspondence. I actually had two pieces of correspondence, I think one is a duplicate of what you received as well. So I don't know if you wanted to touch on it, because you've had some follow-up on that.
Is that the shuttle connection?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, there was a, a letter of request for information from, from the shuttle collection regarding the process that needs to be followed for obtaining school transportation rules and regulations. So what I did was, I did contact, uh, communicate, tried, attempted to communicate with the state trooper who takes care of that, uh, Department of, this Department of Safety. And I have not heard back from him, so what we did was, we researched the RSAs and the safety rules and made copies of the lists of the RSA and the safety rules, and those went forward to the shuttle connection. And they can, they can do their research and they, they will then be connected with the Department of Safety, and then they can determine if they want to go down that road or if they don't want to go down that road. But the superintendent's office is not, is not part of creating transportation companies. You can give them the information and tell them how to, you know, you know, what information they need, but then they need to go forward. So we did send that out, um, by mail, um, today.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was one. The other one was the Polidroad access, um, is that the other one?
Well, I had one that I'll share, but.
And, uh, the Polidroad access, I, we did, went through the emergency, um, planning committee and, as well as the board, to request of the town what process we use, if we want to change. Right now, your Polidroad access is, um, blocked off by rocks and boulders. And so, uh, we were asking if we could put a gate there, so that we could use that in case of an emergency. And we did ask, I, it's the selectmen, um, the board of selectmen to, you know, look into that and respond, and, and which they did. And, um, and the response is, is that we can put up a gate and have it for emergency use only without going through the planning board. What needs to happen, if, if, which you already have in place, it's your, um, they were more concerned about the condition of the road going out to, um, Polidroad, which it, it's been up, it's been, you know, Mark takes care of it all the time, it's, it's, it's right there, so it's, it meets the, the standard, so, um, the road condition is fine, so, um, Butch just very, responded to me and just said, no, everything's all set and you can just move forward with that. So that Mark is moving forward with that.
Is it a gate, because the, um, after-school program uses that path, will they be able to get through it or walk around it, or?
Yeah, they could still, they'll be able to, to walk around, that's just for large vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mark can get it.
There's a good, there'll be a path running around to this.
Okay.
It's, uh, just to keep, uh, vehicles out of the toll.
So did you say that Butch gave you okay to move forward with, like, moving the rocks, whatever there's out there, and putting up a gate?
Yes.
Oh, so they, oh, great, that was easy.
That was, I know that was easy. One of the other concerns that, that came up years ago, and it came up again when, when I was talking with Butch, was the fact that, um, the, the process had moved forward to neighbors of, of Polidroad. And I think at that time, the request was, could we use that access on a regular basis? And that was a concern of the community, was to use that access on a, on a regular basis. And this will not be used on a regular basis, just in case there's, you know, a crisis in, uh...
Yeah, over the years, we've actually reached out to the Lincoln Board, because we'd had, um, discussions at facilities and board meetings about- because we'd had discussions at facilities and board meetings about making that a permanent page, entrance/exit. So this is probably easy, it's not going to be used, hopefully ever.
Right, right.
So.
And, and every time that you've had your accreditation assessment completed, or any other type of agency that comes in, in safety, you know, or your safety assessment, that's been, that's one of the things that all of these agencies have noted, that there is only one entrance and exit to this campus, and that's something, and in emergency situations, needs to, you need to have.
Is there going to be like a key at the police department, the fire department?
Yeah, so the emergency personnel will have that, yeah. And Mark will make sure of that, so. I'll set with that, those were the two I hear.
Okay. Now, just back to the one about the shuttle connection, I passed the letter around. So it was a letter addressed to Judy, and there was a copy in my box as a chairperson. And obviously, you saw from the letter, it was mentioned at the last meeting, I think by Jay, that the budget committee discussed, you know, the use of the shuttle. So they reached out to us, because I think they're looking to expand, you know, their business into bus routes. And Judy followed up with them and gave them all the pertinent information that they need to pursue to, to go down that avenue. The second piece of correspondence was a thank you card from Mr. Baker. You know, the school board gave him a gift, a little retirement gift, so I'll pass this along. I, I'll read it first, it's very Mr. Baker, so I wanted to read it and get it on record. It's perfect, it said, "Thanks for the gift card, will be handy in Italy. I could get all sorts of sweets and treats, but I think it will go to something from the Florence School of Leather, long-lasting to remember my 38 years. Thanks again, Richard A. Baker." He already knows where he's shopping in Italy, just. Quintessential Mr. Baker right there, right? Uh, so moving on to reports, Business Administrator Report, Deb.
Um, I don't really have much, if there are manifests going around.
Yeah. Okay. Judy?
Um, the, let's say, a lot of this we have just already talked about. I did pass out, I did include in your packet a policy on the animal in the classroom and on the school grounds. Because we have been running into, since it's been nice weather, we've been running into some parents bringing their animals to pick up their children. And so when you're, when you're looking at the, the parents are all lined up outside, so there's many parents lined up outside, some little kids as well, that are non-school age, and there's also animals with them. So we did send out a notice stating that, that they need to be more aware of the policy, and that we will be moving forward in, in making sure that this policy is adhered to. So that was one of the, one of the, the other thing was, we had, Judge Broderick came on May 1st, and he came for the afternoon for the middle high school students, and then he talked about mental illness. And he shared his personal experience with mental illness, it was, it was extremely emotional. And the students were, were great, you know, in the afternoon, they really, they really took the information in. He also spoke in the evening, and you had between 30 to 40 people, say. And, and you had a, a group of people that, that, experts of the field. They were, um, they came on after Judge Broderick, in case anyone had any questions in, in how, what processes and procedures to use in, in different situations and different scenarios. And a lot of people shared their experiences with mental illness and which direction they had to go in, in order to get the, the help that they, they needed. But that's his, that's his, he retired from the justice, Chief Justice position and is now doing this full-time. So it was very good to hear from him, and it just brought everything. Very humble man, very humble man. We do have the, some board action items that, that I've written, you can, you all can talk about that during the board action agenda. And you also have your safety meeting minutes, the, the last couple of meetings, as well as your facilities committee meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Judy. Mr. Courier?
Thanks. We've had a couple of events that have happened over the last couple of weeks. One, just to piggyback on what Judy was saying, that Judge Broderick, he knew those students on, on May 1st. It was an interesting thing of note, and I was hitting upon this really quickly, is that we had the opportunity to actually have, for the afternoon session, we had the, you know, Judge Broderick, who was the retired Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of New Hampshire. But we also had the current sitting Supreme Court Justice Chief, who is also in attendance. The, the work that Judge Broderick was doing is enough of the current Supreme Court Chief Justice has, you know, has asked to come along on some of his visits to schools. So he was here in Lincoln, so both are there. He also had the opportunity to kind of speak. After hearing Judge Broderick's story, it's, it's a little tough kind of transitioning from one to the other. But he, you know, and, and there is a connection between the two when you hear the judge's personal story that was, I think, very meaningful to our student body. On that, that was on Tuesday, on that Thursday, our, through an ELO, a standard learning opportunity, you know, experience that two of our students put together, Ms. Jen Bomba and Mr. Bailey Harrington, we participated in a mock accident that was conducted on the front field, that was seen by students in grades nine through 12. This was in coordination with the Lincoln Police, Lincoln Fire, Woodstock Police, Woodstock Fire, the Lynnwood Ambulance, and local dispatch. So there was a full-on, we also, Arnold's was also there to donate the use of the automobiles. We had five students that volunteered their participation to play various roles, as well as one adult who was in a parent role. The, it was approximately from 11:15 until noon time, 12:15 of that same, took about an hour. It was raining slightly, there was tents put up, so kids could watch. Mr. Bijou was able to emcee the event, to kind of provide an educational experience of what happens, why it happens, what the next steps are, kind of having a lot of really good educational moments and some hard-hitting moments for, for both students and adults, as far as the, you know, looking at the, what are the effects of distracted and intoxicated or impaired driving. So we had a debrief session afterwards in the gymnasium with high school students with those first responders. They had a debrief that was, I thought, very, very well. And then we invited the first responders to lunch, and they got to have a, Mr. Marshall was kind enough to give them a lunch on us, and kind of sit and break some bread with our students, which I thought was a great way to end the, the event. Prom was, uh, went off without, it was, was great, had a great time on Saturday. I, I've also realized as I get older that my bedtime needs to stay before midnight. So Sunday was a little bit, a little tough, but prom, the kids had a great time. We had approximately 72 students that were participating, Lynnwood students that were at prom. And we had over four students that were here at school at 11 o'clock at night to participate in the post-prom activities that were put together through ADAPT, that did help me sleep much, much better. So, you know, if you think that they don't get enough school, apparently being at school from 11 to 2 a.m. is a great idea. Just a couple of quick things, one more thing is, last night, we had the K through 12 chorus concert that Ms. Burhoe put together, we heard some amazing performances. One specifically from Jade Fitzgerald and Jared Avery. They put on a, an absolute wonderful duet that I thought was probably one of the best I've ever heard as far as high school students performing. That, you know, and, and kudos to the, the rest of the chorus, both y'all through K through 12, they just had a fantastic job. It was the last concert for our outgoing seniors. And if you want to get more musically inclined, the Elementary Review will be on Thursday, the 17th, next week.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, go ahead.
As far as the concert goes, was, was, was that being videotaped, so it would be replayed on the connection?
Yes.
I think that's fantastic. As you said, everybody, you know, the, the whole chorus had a great job. You know, there's another piece that people should watch with the, the two senior, or two of the seniors, with Jared Avery and Mariah Kate, were featured. But, yeah, that, that duet, which was Andrea Bocelli and Celine Dion's song, was, was pretty amazing, you know, to experience firsthand. I think it was, it was very dusty in the gym, because a lot of people were like, had watery eyes afterwards.
Yeah, it was, you know. It got really loud after, too.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, that'd be great, once that's up there, for people to, to check that out. It was, like you said, you know, in, in many years, a lot of educators have commented, you know, and former educators who said, you know, I've been here for 40-plus years, and that's one of the most amazing performances I've ever seen.
Yeah.
So, those, those, because they're not only talented, but they've put a lot of hard work into it, too, to get to the point that they have. Brian?
Two things. One, that, I, I saw that, it is like on Facebook.
It is, yes.
Somebody showed me that, it was pretty well. The other one, I just had, I guess I just needed to know, I mentioned it to him the other day, more info on the prom being held in the bar. I know it was a ball dropped by the Woodstock Station.
Yep.
Which led it to be presented in a bar area. I know that it wasn't a bar that served alcohol at the time. But as someone whose career is in bars, I have, I don't know how it went, and I hope it went well, and I'm sure it went well. However, I just think on Cinco de Mayo, and I just have to get this off my chest, sharing bathrooms with drinkers in a community that's small, so I feel like, you know, like, the 15-year-old kid could run into Jay, you know. But could run into somebody, you know, in, in, in a state that they shouldn't be in, because you're youth, it's not, it wasn't a private area, you know, so, you know. I think it was irresponsible by the Woodstock Inn, and I think we had to do what we had to do, because we ran out of time. But if they had made some adjustments, I think the kids could have gone upstairs and had private bathrooms and had all their own stuff. And I'm glad it went off, you know, without a thing, and that shows a lot on our kids. But I don't think, you know, looking down the road, that they should have interaction at that style. You know, yes, it was in, if it was in the function room, it's a nicely area, they get their own bathrooms, you know, the bar serves soda, yada, yada. But when it became into a public zone, where you were sharing public access hallways, public bathrooms, with not the most savory of folks on Cinco de Mayo. And from a bar standpoint, like, you know, someone that has seen firsthand working the bar and the Woodstock Inn for a long time, I'm glad nothing happened. And I, and I, and I was pretty sure that people like you, Scott, wouldn't allow anything to happen. I just think going forward, it might be something that we need to address, like, we're full of hotels, we're full of facilities that could accommodate, you know, and even I could reach out and get us a function room, I'm sure, you know, or any other place, you know. That, you know, it's nice of the Woodstock Inn to offer up their space, but clearly, in, in my opinion, I just feel like that there was a ball drop that, that could have gone bad. And because the kids know each other, and what I was getting at is like, you know, you just, you know, this one kid knows that, you know, her dad's buddy's down there, and wants to go say hi, because it just makes them, you know, and they're interacting with people they shouldn't be, you know. I just needed to get it off my chest, because it's really bothered me since I heard that it was changing, and I, you know, chased him down one day, and, you know, there's nothing you could do. What was it, going to try to like, create a big thing and put the brakes on it, because it's their prom, and, but it shouldn't have come down to, you know, that Monday, just realizing that, oh, you know, we have to make these moves, you know. So I, just going forward, I'd like to see, you know, some thought or discussion, just in case that type of thing happens again. And I'm very pleased that our kids are, are great.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I think obviously it wasn't the ideal. I mean, we had, we normally booked that, you know, many, many weeks and months in advance. And so there was obviously a, you know, it was, as you referred to it, was a ball.
Wait, what, excuse me, what, what happened exactly?
There was.
Where was it supposed to be?
The function.
In the upstairs.
Upstairs function.
Where it has been.
And they booked two functions on the same night.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, you know, that being said, they, they, there was, I, I think there, there was a lot of effort to close that section. There was a lot of effort to put to close off sections on both sides. That bar, that's, that restaurant part of the area was closed. There was signs to be closed, they, the station had people posted to keep it. So, you know, ideal, no, but I understand what their concern would be. But I think there, there was some steps to make sure, I don't want anybody here to feel that there are students at any point were.
No, and that's right. I think that, that it was probably handled very much fine, and I don't doubt that. I just think that, you know, there, there is always potential when you're mixing, I know that the way that building's made, and, and so you had, there was times where you were mixing people. You know, it, it's just the nature of the setup. If they were operating out of the lower bar, and the upper bar was the party, you still have that hallway that leads to the restrooms, and there is some public overlap that I, I don't think is necessary. Especially on a day like, you know, that could have been really bad. But I think, I'm, you, trust me, I'm very happy that the kids had a great time and that it executed well, and that the school does a good job at that. I just think, just down the road, maybe just reviewing where we're going to do it, so.
And Jay, you were not there?
I was not there. Just to be clear here.
Yeah, I think, you know, through our, our many years of doing proms, hosting proms, and scheduling places to have them, it's the first time we've run into this incident. Um, you know, it would have been nice if there could have been a mad scramble to maybe find different accommodations. A lot of moving pieces to that. But just to echo Brian's, that I, you know, when I found out my child was going to, you know, the bar for a prom, it's like, that's not the best venue. But I put faith in the supervision that was going to be there, that, and that the, you know, the owners of the Woodstock Station would make sure that everything was handled appropriately there as well, so. But again, you know, moving forward, we want to do our best to avoid another.
Yeah.
Situation like that.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports. So Facilities has not met since last meeting. Um, no. Other than Policy met tonight, so we'll get into that a little bit. And were there any other committees that have met?
Did we meet before safety? I think we met.
We have met.
Right?
Oh, right, yeah.
Before safety.
We met before the, since the last meeting, I think.
Yeah.
But everything, we've touched on everything pretty much through, through our discussions.
Okay, and we all have the minutes to, to look through that as well.
Newly appointed Policy Committee Chair.
Yes, Jasmine forced Jay to be the, the Chair of the Policy Committee. If you want to give a quick summary, you know, I'll, I'll go real quick. We pushed everything back, that was at first reading last meeting, to back to Policy. Jay was new to the board and new to Policy Committee, so he had a different, a bunch of different questions on that. So it was good to go back into more depth with some of those policies. We made a small dent in that.
Yeah, essentially, read through the, through some of the things that had come up in reading the new bullying policy, and the new, primarily the new bullying and the new student sexual harassment policy. And we've made some recommendations for some changes that I think Judy's going to take care of. And I guess we'll do another reading at the next meeting, or look through it at the next meeting, right? And then, I guess, make a recommendation, or present it for first reading at the next board meeting after that, if it's all good to go.
Right. Well, I think we made, you made our recommendations to have that, those changes made, and then you're going to email them to us to see if.
Before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting, okay. Yeah, and then we'll probably have those two at first reading for the next board meeting. And then the rest that were on that list are still in committee.
I was, I thought, I was a little confused, I thought you meant get it to us before the next policy meeting, but you're saying get it to us before the next board meeting.
Right, because that can go into the, that could go on first reading for the next board meeting.
Right. And then we can obviously review it as a board.
Yep.
You know, determine any more changes that need to be made at that point.
But I would like the Policy Committee to review it prior to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other committees to speak of? Nope. I have none. So moving on, business requiring board action. Judy?
Yeah, I have some recommendations for your coaches. These are the fall coaches. As you know, we went through a, a policy change on that, so we did follow the policy. And you have your recommendations for coaching for the 1819 school year. Middle school boys soccer is Adam Donani, and middle school girls soccer is Denise Drappo. Varsity boys soccer is Blair Whedon, and varsity girls soccer is Tony Drappo. Varsity cross-country is Sarah Boden. In the winter, we'll have middle school boys basketball, Casey Murphy. Middle school skiing, Aaron, Aaron Luks, Luks, varsity skiing, Aaron Luks. And varsity boys basketball, Scott Courier, and varsity girls basketball, Tony Drappo. Also the coaches.
Thank you.
Are we advertising for middle school girls basketball?
Varsity boys basketball?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
It's early, yeah.
And Casey's varsity, middle school boys basketball?
Yes, yeah. So I think all those fall coaches are returning from last year.
Yes. Yes.
And then two new varsity basketball coaches, and Casey is returning as middle school boys.
Who was the girls' basketball coach last year? Who's not returning?
The middle school.
Sean. For which one?
Girls varsity basketball.
Sean Quinn? He's a guidance counselor here at the school.
Should I know?
You're new. Is that it on that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so new business.
Oh, I saw in the memo you wanted to take a vote on June thirteenth school board meeting.
Yeah, the June thirteenth, that's the, the, uh, meeting in which you also have middle school has their
Yeah, I have a suggestion on that. I just, I noticed in your memo you said you wanted to move it to five thirty and that, that starts at seven down there. I mean, you guys probably be down there, yeah. I, I'm just like, do we even wanna have a, a meeting that night?
I was gonna suggest that as an option, if we move the meeting to a different night.
I'm sorry.
What, so our, our, our June meeting, which is our only June meeting, right, or no, we have one on the twenty seventh, I'm thinking of July.
That's why I'm thinking of
So June thirteenth is the eighth grade continuation. Uh, so our administrators will be down there, they need to be down there for the ceremony at seven o'clock. Mr. Figuring will not be here as well. So it was suggested in the memo from Judy to bump the time up and start the board meeting at five thirty, which may be a little more difficult. So I don't know if we wanted to
Put your suit the week before. I mean, I also think the, the June meetings are also a little light. I've, I've often questioned, do we need two June meetings with, I mean, we've got another one on the twenty
Seventh.
Seventh. If you guys think we're gonna be heavy.
There's just a couple of things I can, you know, but this, we have some positions, so we're having some nominations. Also, we, we probably gonna need some more trust fund hearings because we have some projects that we have removed out of the budget. Budget that we're gonna need to do that at some point, um, probably early June so we can get that.
Okay.
So, I mean, do you move it to
If you did it the week before, then you could have those particular items on the agenda and that would be the only thing that we would be doing.
I can't make it the week before. Can we do it the day before or the day after? Or does that have to be with it?
I, um, I just, also just add a little bit more problem to it. I, it's like impossible for me to, it's hard for me to make five thirty, it's impossible for me to make five.
Right, well, that, that's why I was suggesting moving it to a different date, because I knew that would be difficult for
Tuesday?
I mean, with Tuesday, Tuesday, June twelfth been in the people's schedules? You know, doing it one day earlier? I can do that. Yeah, I think that's the, the best way. And then we can have a full policy meeting beforehand.
I'll still be here at five thirty anyway.
Maybe we should start policy meetings at five forty about. We can talk about that.
Five thirty five, that's when I was in.
You could do it after the meeting, maybe take it eight thirty if you want.
Yeah, eleven, eight thirty to eleven, is that what we're gonna do?
Should we have to vote on that?
I think we do. Yeah, we do.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move the June thirteenth school board meeting a day earlier to June twelfth.
Thank you Vance, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? That will be moved to a day earlier to say June twelfth. Uh, any other new business before we go to continuing?
No.
All right, hearing none. So first thing under continuing business is the board goal setting session. I know we've discussed this a couple of times. I know Matt's not here tonight, um, you know, but he, he brought up the, the idea of having it after. Uh, he goes to that, um, what's the training he's going to?
Strategic planning.
He's going to that, I think he's going to that in two weeks, which is on a board night.
Yeah, it's May twenty third.
Yeah.
So I think we would, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we can kind of narrow down a date of where we can get together and discuss our goals. And Matt can bring back any information that'll be pertinent to that and give us more guidance than just kinda doing a rehash from year to year. Uh, board evaluations, um, I did not see any in my box. Oh, Brian's got one? Okay.
That'll just make you feel better. Actually, open it and make sure that's what's in there.
It's in there.
You can keep the envelope as the envelope to put them all in if you want.
So I
Sorry, I'll get that to you.
No, that's fine. You know, I feel like I should probably have thrown out a reminder of what I was gonna suggest to do, which, I mean, Vance, you can speak to this, when you collect all these, then it's a matter of kinda putting all the scores together and coming up with the aggregate. I wouldn't want to, Brian, have to do the work again, but, you know, I could spend, you know, forty-five minutes putting this thing into Survey Monkey and everybody could, and everybody could do it online. Yes.
These two pieces.
Yeah.
Why don't you do that?
I've abstained from that because I've
Probably, yeah.
You could, yeah, yeah.
That's from, how did we do last year?
Right.
I would like the Survey Monkey.
I would rather do that and if I'm the only one that filled it out, why don't you just give me that back?
Yeah, and then once I put that together and email it off to everybody, you can just pump those things in there.
Yeah, that's the same, but that, that thing is better for record keeping too, because then you have it in there.
Yeah, and I think that'll, that'll compile all the aggregates and it'll save, it'll pre a little work for me putting the survey together, but it'll eliminate work at the end.
Right. I like that, thanks.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that, um, probably by the beginning of next week. Uh, and the other thing was the, you know, last week we had the presentation from NECC. Which I thought was, you know, a very good presentation. They had a, a, a lot of good ideas and different things they're doing with their program. I guess it's on the docket now to figure out if we want to pursue that in the near future. If anybody wants to weigh in their opinion?
I mean, my thought is, I missed the presentation, um, a couple of months ago. Judy presented it to us as an idea. I think Judy and I talked about it once after that also. The only thing is, it's not in our budget, it's pretty pricey. It's tough to say, hey, we're gonna whip one hundred eighty-five or two hundred thousand, whatever it is, out of general funds, so I mean, for that purpose, I would say it's really not feasible for us to do.
Can I, can I just add one to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the, the component of that is that, that those monies would be coming out of your out of district, um, placement line. So, when, when I was explaining it, if you had one student that had to be placed out of district, it's two hundred thousand dollars. We do have enough in a line, just in case there is a placement made out of district. This program is a hundred eighty-six thousand and it would take care of six students within your district. So, but as far as the money goes, we would use that line that is out of district.
I agree with that.
Yeah, just so.
And, and the assumption is that that would replace the need for out of district placements?
Right.
I think, you know, my, obviously my one concern coming in, Vance mentioned, was the, the financial part of it, you know, we're past budget season, where do we get that? And I actually, when I was at the S U today, I mentioned at the dev and she said the same thing you did, that, you know, we would take it out of, out of district placement. And I guess, you know, as far as us taking a vote on moving forward with this, you know, I would kind of defer to, you know, the opinion of administration, and I think we all recognize the need, the increasing needs that we're dealing with. And that's why we, we sought that, this out and had the presentation as, as something new and creative to, to help us with that. So I don't know if, if you guys have a strong opinion one way or the other, if, if this is something we should be pursuing?
Well, I, I do have a, I could, I could clarify a lot of perceptions out there, but my major concern, I, I would need to go into non-public and talk about it in the end.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions also, but, I mean, I don't know if I should hold them for non, I don't know, I don't think they are non-public.
It's about a student or
No, it's not about a student. I guess my, and I, sorry, I wasn't here the last meeting. Was it stated in the presentation where on campus this would?
We would, we would determine that.
Okay.
As far as we have to have a room, we have to supply the room.
So it's a single room?
A classroom.
Okay. Do we have a single room is my next question.
Well, we would have to, we would have to develop, I mean, you're gonna have to do something anyway, so it's whether we do it ourselves or we have an agency come in and
Okay, because you had also mentioned to me, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, that Mark was currently doing plans for renovating another room for, I can't remember what the term we used, kind of like a take a break.
Like a resource room, yeah?
So like that would be, so now we're talking two rooms.
No, 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 that would be the type of
This would probably be the
We would use Well, I thought Sorry.
Nope.
So when we talked about that other room, I thought that was designed more for kids who just needed a break and maybe not necessarily
This whole program.
Out of district kids, maybe Johnny who's having a tough time with whatever's going on at home can go take a break too. But that wouldn't be the case with this room. It wouldn't be for anyone just to go if they're having a bad day to get out of the classroom.
Depending on what the behavior is.
Well, no, this would be specifically designed for out of district kids, right?
Kids with escalated behaviors.
So it sounds like we have
That would qualify for their, for their program, yeah.
So we, and, so we couldn't just send any kid to that room one day. I mean, so now we're talking two different rooms for two different things. So I guess my question is, we don't have two different rooms though, do we?
Well, I guess was the, was the plan for the first room kinda geared more towards a use for?
Right, right. The, the original plan, um, that we've been working on this year is, is trying to have to want, have a room where students can go if they do escalate within the classroom and they need that, right, they can go, they would go with an adult.
But a kid who escalates isn't necessarily a
Kid who just needs space, yeah.
Out of district placed kid.
No, no, I mean, um, but, but there could be other options, whether it be a social worker or guidance counselor or, or to be able to process their emotions in, in another area of school, you know, with another, you, you would, you would have another area because there are other roles that have, that are played as well, that we already have adults available for students who are having a bad moment in class and have to, to reflect on what it is and, and process their emotions. That part is part of IEPs and part of programming, anyway, so we already have that. The one thing that we don't have is this one room where you would need intense therapy for students who have, you know, out of thirty hours, fifteen of those hours, you need to be in a different classroom environment.
She did say though, Vance, that for the, for the kids that are part of the program, one of their goals is to incorporate them into the general classroom as much as possible.
Right.
And, and if they were in a general classroom and they had an issue, that, that they could go back to that room for that type of cooldown or whatever they call it, but, but, but so as first, as far as this, for the specific kids that were involved, that would be available.
Right.
But only for those kids.
Right, but so, what you're saying is, or
Boy, we've definitely had, we've definitely had, I guess now two different conversations on having two different rooms or we've had a conversation about having a room for a different purpose also. So that's my question, we don't have two rooms that we're gonna have set aside for two different things.
No, no, the newest, but we already have the rooms for the kid, kiddos who need the, the short-term
We do.
Processing. Well, well, that's with the guidance council, they go to the guidance counselor or they go to the, I don't know, but I mean, they would go to the guidance counselor sometimes, process with the special ed teacher, depending on, on what the help and, help needs are and also the assistant principal. So those are the things that already happened with that level of need that you're talking about. The only other room that we're talking about is the intense, the intense room where they, they need to be, they have to be an adult in that room.
When kids are throwing tables and stuff like that.
Right.
So
So, so that.
Yeah.
Where
If, so you're saying if those kids aren't necessarily in this program, where are they going to go when they need to be taken out of the room? I think they would be in this program.
I don't think we can ever guarantee that.
Well, I think, I, I
Right, for sure.
If I'm gonna be wrong, what Vance might be saying is we have a, we're, we're building a room for six kids, the only six kids can go in. So if we have a seventh kid, where does the seventh kid go? I.e. that room that you guys have talked about.
And maybe I'm misremembering, did we, did we have that conversation as a board using a room like that at some point?
Yeah.
I think we did.
I think we did. I think Matt, I mean, he's not here, so I can't speak from my point, he was pretty
We definitely did, because we were talking about what it should be called.
Right.
Yes.
So I understand that part.
And you, and you and I had a conversation, Judy, at one point, that we needed on that specific room that I'm talking about. We need to educate our staff that it's not a step backwards because we're gonna use it for a variety of purposes.
Correct.
Okay.
My other concern about the NECC was, she said that it was about a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars for their part of the program, but then also we were required to provide all the paraprofessionals for that, uh, and that they expected that to be essentially a one-on-one. So that we need to have six pairs available for students that are in that program if we fill it. Which it seems like we may not fill it, is that, I mean, we would fill it, okay. So we have, so we have, you know, six full-time people that would be in that, with one-on-one, do we have the staffing for that? Or are we looking, we would be looking to hire more people?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at the staffing that we have now and the needs that we have now and moving forward, what, what that would look like. Um, we are short-staffed.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you look at the list of, well, is there eight pairs now, if we take six of them, put them in that one room, and maybe there's other
Right, some of them are already, there are other students.
Right, there are other students. But they're not designed to students that would necessarily go to this room.
Right.
Right, but I guess, that's what I'm saying, are we, what, what additional staffing are we, are we looking at hiring to accommodate that and then how much is that gonna cost?
I mean, I'd have to go look to see, but I mean, I mean, as far as how many, um, exactly, right now you have, um,
I think that would probably also depend on what that committee decides with I don't know what the pay is yet, we don't know what the pay is yet for pairs in, in general, right?
Well, right, that's something that we've, we've been discussing, but, I mean, if we have twenty-five thousand dollars extra to spend on pairs, and, and it may be helpful to know how many we're looking at before we start doing with that aspect of it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Brian, do you have a question?
Yeah, how many kids are, that would qualify as program are out of district right now?
None of them.
So we don't, we, we haven't sent anybody out of district?
One of the issues you have with, there's no place to send them.
Okay.
So, so
I mean, the closest one is Manchester.
Right, so you, so when you, when you look, when we talk about, part of the issues that we run against with, you know, all the kids with escalated behaviors and all these other, you know, the issues that we've talked about, the, the closest day program is tilted. So, you know, if, if I'm, if I'm a parent of, of, of a kid, you know, if you go in this small new center, so if, if I'm a parent of a kiddo who's having escalated behaviors and I, and the district has determined that they qualify for a day per, a therapeutic day program to be out of district. And then they provide that to me as an option. That would mean that my child or with that parent's child would be bussed to, the closest would be forty-five to an hour one way. And then back. So as a parent, from, and when, when we've presented that to parents and that's happened, you know, you present the parent, it's simply felt like that's just not an option. Where we can't, we can't, you know, from, from a parent's perspective, where we just can't take that option, we can't get them there. So it falls back and that's kind of our geographic where we are. So you have some of these, like how do you provide the support to us to, but in the school setting?
I guess then my follow-up would be, I'm just, so we don't have anybody that's out. Put aside that this thing can take care of six students. If today you had to, if the nearest like outside thing was in Campden, how many students do we think would, that you would recommend go to this program? Like, do we have two students?
So for I would be able to, I would not
No, 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 it, I know, it's not like, but what I'm saying is, you have to have some idea whether it's, we need, we need this program, but we only have really one student.
They do have an idea, but they can't talk about it in public session, so we have to go into non-public to talk about it.
Then, then I'd prefer to go non-public.
Let's do it.
All right, so we'll save the conversation.
That would be good, yeah.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
Thanks.
Mrs. Smith?
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? I do have some things for you. Let's see. Jen Witcher just had some additional details about prom. She said the kids danced a night away to Mr. Webster. She wanted to thank Mr. Webster for providing the music. Thanks to Woodstock Station for hosting them. And thank you to Ken Watson and Lyndon McIntyre for taking pictures. The pictures are available on Facebook if anybody wants to see the kids dressed up. Thank you to Mr. Courier and to Randy Herk for chaperoning. It was another successful year for student council. She appreciated the participation enthusiasm by students this year. Randy Herk wanted to thank Marcus Corey and Doug Moorhead for helping to chaperone that evening. They had forty-two students and a good time was had by all. Heather Krill wanted you to know that the author Ty Gagne is coming Wednesday to speak to the girls of Summer Crew about his book Where You'll Find Me. It discusses the death of Kate Mastronova and Abid Hiker who was lost to the elements a few years ago. Aaron Laux said that on the seventeenth, he and Mrs. Pimblin, also known as Team Heart, put on the annual jump rope